I'd like to welcome you to this meeting of the College Station Independent School Board of Trustees. We were elected at large to represent the interests of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was made available to us at least 72 hours in advance, and we have all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We have just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or in upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take action so as to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We are pleased that you have taken time this evening to join us. We are very proud of this school district, and we thank you for your interest and support of our students. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Dr. Yoken. We'll begin tonight with our pledges to the American flag, Texas flag, in a moment of silence. And here to lead us, we have two fine students from South Knoll Elementary School. And to introduce our pledge leaders, we have Laura Richter, Principal of South Knoll Elementary School.
We're really happy to be here, actually, with two outstanding fourth graders at South Knoll. I have Xavier Vella and Maddie Silva, and they are both just everything a principal. When you make a list of what you want kids to be in your school, they have every quality. They are smart and hardworking, good friends to everybody, and leaders. And on top of all that, if that's not enough, they're also both great athletes. Xavier is a super football and basketball player, and Maddie is a star on the soccer field. So they're just all that in a bag of chips, and they're here to lead us in the pledge. You ready, guys?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands, foundation, under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all. On the Texas flag, our pledge allegiance to the city, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Can you get a picture real quick? Thank you. Thank you, both. Thank you. Dr. Yoken, members of the board, we have a number of student recognitions this evening. We'll start with our National Merit semifinalists, a total of 20. College Station ISD seniors were recently named semifinalists in the 61st Annual National Merit Scholarship Awards Program announced by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. Since 2003, College Station ISD has averaged an astounding 12 and 1/2 National Merit semifinalist per year. The 20 semifinalists in 2016 marks the highest total recorded in the district during that 14-year span. The 20 CSISD students are now in a pool of approximately 16,000 semifinalists nationwide and are competing for 7,500 National Merit Scholarships worth approximately $33 million. About 90% of the semifinalists are expected to be named finalists, and of those, around half will win a National Merit Scholarship and earn the prestigious National Merit Scholar Title. Approximately 1.5 million juniors entered the 2016 Scholarship Program by taking the PSAT. The nationwide pool of semifinalists, which represents less than 1% of U.S. high school seniors, includes the highest-scoring entrance in each state. Scholarship winners for 2017 will be announced through a series of press releases beginning in April and concluding in May. Our 20 National Merit semifinalists are, and I'll call everyone's name, not everyone is able to be here tonight, and I apologize in advance for those names that I mispronounce. Elmyra Adili, An Burgess, Dana Cho, Catherine Davis, Allison Fang, Tashawn Fernando. Jan Su Wang, Katerina Hurtado. Benjamin Lamb, Tony Lee. Kung Sen Ken, Ellen Wang, and Brandon Zo. In addition to the 20 National Merit semifinalists just named, 34 College Station ISD students received a letter of commendation from the National Merit Scholarship Program. Approximately 34,000 commended students throughout the nation are being recognized for their exceptional academic promise. Although they will not continue in the 2016 competition for National Merit Scholarship Awards, commended students placed among the top 5% of approximately 1.5 million students who entered the 2015 competition by taking the 2015 PSAT. Our 34 recipients are Yang Jinkham, all right, Yang Jinkham, Ariun Bol, sorry. Okay, Matthew Arthur. In addition to the 20 National Merit semifinalists just named, 34 College Station ISD students received a letter of commendation from the National Merit Scholarship Program. Approximately 34,000 commended students throughout the nation are being recognized for their exceptional academic promise. Although they will not continue in the 2016 competition for National Merit Scholarship Awards, commended students placed among the top 5% of approximately 1.5 million students who entered the 2015 competition by taking the 2015 PSAT. Our 34 recipients are Yang Jinkham, all right, Yang Jinkham, Ariun Bol, sorry. Okay, Matthew Arthur. I know Matthew's here. Avery Hodges, Adnan Khan, Grace Kim, Yang Su Li, Marissa McShane, Marusha McHerje, Olivia Teodoro, Eugene Tian, Pablo Villalobos, Kelvin Wang, and Shelley Zo. Board members, our last group tonight is the National Hispanic Recognition Program. A total of 11 College Station ISD high school students earned certificates from the College Board's 2016-2017 National Hispanic Recognition Program. To be eligible for this honor, students must have taken the PSAT during their junior year, be of at least 1/4 Hispanic or Latino descent, achieve the minimum PSAT score, and achieve a GPA of 3.0 or higher by the end of their junior year. College Board's National Hispanic Recognition Program identifies academically outstanding Hispanic and Latino high school students. Each year, the NHRP honors about 5,000 of the highest-scoring students from over 250,000 Hispanic and Latino juniors who take the PSAT. Christopher Sanchez. Christopher Sanchez here. No. Kevin Sanchez, John Chikarian, Pablo Villalobos. Thank you. That's 65 kiddos who've had an incredible, successful run here in College Station Independent School District. It's a testament to your hard work, to your perseverance. We know that it's not just you who shares in this accomplishment. Your parents, and grandparents, and guardians, and others in your life share that as well. I know we've seen them all come up here and take a picture when you've come up here, but I would love for any parents, grandparents, or guardians of any of our recognized students to please stand at this time and be recognized. Thank you so much, and thank you for sharing your children with us in College Station ISD.
Thank you very much for joining us, those of you that were able to come. This is an example of why the board members are so excited about working with College Station ISD, is the great students and the great parents that we have. While we're clearing the boardroom out, I would like you to at least take a look at the wall that shows some of the artwork that's been provided by elementary students from South Knoll and high school students from both College Station High School and A&amp;M Consolidated. Yeah, some of it's really good for elementary. You don't have that kind at your house? Okay. We don't either. As I have shared with the board before, we were given a, at our house, one of our students was said, "I'll make sure you get an A if you promise never to take art again in this school district." So it was a smart instructor. We're going to move to the consent agenda. The items that are on consent are G, I-1, J-3, J-4, J-5, J-6, J-7. Does anybody have anything they'd like to pull off?
I would move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Move to board reports. Does anybody have anything they'd like to show at the group?
I attended the personnel advisory meeting. I'm very interested that Mike Martindale can take heat and questions. He did a very good job the other day. I think he was seeing a lot of the day-to-day operations that we don't see, issues with facilities, cleaning, grounds. He talked about stipends, some budget things, and even the safety of kids' lights being on, extending the lights on Friday nights. So it was very informative for me, since I've never attended before.
Anything else? Okay, how about you, Dr. Ely?
We've got a few things in regards to upcoming events. Do want to highlight the Youth Career Fair that will take place tomorrow for eighth graders in College Station ISD and all across the Brazos Valley. It'll be held at the Brazos County Expo Center, and thanks to our friends at the Bryan College Station Chamber of Commerce for putting that on, and for all the folks who will be there to show the different opportunities that are available for kids as they grow up and move on to college and the workforce. So we will have our eighth graders out doing that, and invite you, if you have time, to stop by and see, and visit and see all the things that are available for kids out there. Do also want to talk about Thursday, the 20th. There will be a groundbreaking at the Lincoln Center. We do have a number of our kids who go to the Lincoln Center for a number of activities, and they are breaking ground on expansion there. And that groundbreaking will be between 4:30 and 6:30 on Thursday, the 20th. So invite you, as your time allows, that you go by there and represent the school district. We really appreciate our friends at the City of College Station and the folks at the Lincoln Center for being great partners with us in College Station ISD. It's a big week in high school athletics. Our cross-country teams will be competing in district, and our team tennis teams have area. And then we have one other thing that I'll pass around to the board members that you could look at as well. A number of our art educators will be honored at the George Bush Library, at the Spotlight on Art Educators, on Thursday, November 3rd, from 6:30 to 7:30. Jamie Bevins, Christine Gray, Lauren Harris, Mike DeZietzman, and Mindy Austin are among the College Station ISD representatives. If you're interested in going, then please let us know. We just need to RSVP for you by, I believe it's the 30th and 31st on there. So those are some things that are coming up that the board might be interested in. The other thing that I have on my report for this evening is talking just a little, very briefly, about the 2016-17 budget update. You may recall, at a previous meeting, we talked a little bit about the enrollment increase. College Station ISD does continue to grow. This year, we are not growing at the same pace that we had in the three previous years where we added 2,000 students in a three-year period. We are up about 200 students or so year over year, which is a little bit under our projection that we had moving into the development of our 2016-17 maintenance and operations budget. Just wanted to let y'all know that Mr. Martindale will be coming and talking with us at the workshop session next month, kind of talking about where we are in regards to that, and some things we can do to adjust for that as we move through the school year. So just a little bit about where we are with budget, and with that, that ends my report.
Okay, great. We'll move on to item F, Hearing of Citizens. And I have one card, Gerard Toussaint. Ms. Horn will keep up with the timing. You have a three-minute time.
My name is Gerard Toussaint, and I live at 3,000 Arapahoe Ridge Drive. My wife Andrea would be making this speech but for the fact that she's driving our daughter home from a CSMS event as we speak. She also feels a bit vilified by recent comments offered by our CSISD board in spite of over 2,500 hours of service at our CSISD schools, purely volunteer work. It was Andrea specifically, among others, who was directly called a hypocrite at the meeting last week, and I'm here to explain why she's not. First, it's entirely consistent with Andrea's beliefs that she advocated for the BAC plan for rezoning. Second, she was clearly concerned that the board would not follow that plan, and given my review of the workshop tapes and my experience from September 20, she had every right to be concerned. She proposed that if, and only if, the board chose not to vote for the BAC plan, that one of the alternative plans made the most sense to her. This stemmed from her worry about the 15% of kids at a maroon school that would go to a purple high school, or vice versa. She's allowed to have that thought and to express it. She subjugated that concern to advocate for the BAC plan as her first choice. Why? Because she knew the people who wrestled with the tough decision-making as members of the BAC. She had less time to ruminate on it, and therefore made this her second request, and I don't find anything hypocritical about that. And finally, she expressed the option of re-tasking the committee, and she shared with me two reasons. First, if well-meaning citizens are praised in public for their process on their work on an issue, and if the board then goes on to vote it down, that there must be something wrong with the inputs. The work was superb, but the result was disagreeable, so the inputs must have been wrong. And the other reason, B, is political expediency and mistrust. When the board writes its own plan in the face of ones offered democratically or by a professional administration whose full-time job it is to monitor the health of the district, then public mistrust comes into play. Mistrust has ballot repercussions and leads to board turnover and the intentional unraveling of plans down the road. And having kids shuttled between schools with each November vote is the worst of all scenarios. These three ideas are internally consistent with a belief in community, a belief in the wisdom of the masses, a belief that more friends are better than fewer friends, a belief in the professional skills of the administration, and a belief that well-meaning continuity over time serves us all. Thank you.
Move on to item H1, Receive Report on CSISD Communication Department. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Dr. Yoken. As has been our custom, each year, we come to the board with six different program reports of about 10 to 15 minutes in length. We've gone through a number of them over the past two and a half years or so, and we are proud today to be able to talk about the great work that's done by our very Spartan communications staff. And I think you'll be impressed with the great work they're able to put out with small numbers of folks and resources that they have in front of them. So to present that report today is our Director for Communications, Chuck Glenwinkle. Dr. Glenwinkle.
Thank you, Dr. Ely, Dr. Yoken, distinguished members of the board. It's my pleasure to be here to share with you briefly a little bit of the work that we do as a College Station ISD Communications Department. I was hoping some of the National Merit folks would stick around, and, you know, maybe I could recruit some folks into the public sector communications, but I don't see any of them, and I don't blame them. So, anyway. So first of all, I just want to talk about who we are. These are us, the three of us. Courtney Dorn, the person there on the bottom left, she's our front desk receptionist. We just hired her. This is her first year of work here in College Station ISD. She's the first person people see when they come in the front door, and she's the person that answers the main line and feeds people wherever they need to go. In the middle there is Atticton Berkman. He is 23-years-old, graduate of A&amp;M Consolidated High School and Texas A&amp;M University. His specialty is audio/video. He can do just about anything. It seems like young kids coming out of high school and college can do any kind of web or anything now that we had to make a special effort. or anything now that we had to make a special effort to learn. They just know it, I think, growing up. So, and then there's me with a Polaroid on the bottom right. And this is my seventh year in the school district, and I think that kind of sums it up right there. So, communication is important, as these medical staff illustrate here. Basically, what we do is we let the community, staff, students, and families know what's going on in College Station ISD. That is our basic function. Communication is important on a macro level, but it's also, it's also important on even the easiest of tasks. They can be thrown off by lack of good communication. That's basically what we do. So how do we do it? One of the ways is through our local media outlets. Elizabeth, hi. Writer with the Eagle right there. Media relations, those are the four main outlets we work with. The Eagle, Bill Oliver at WTAW, several reporters at KBTX and KAGS. And media relations is not very difficult. It really is me serving as a point of contact between those guys and any expert within the district. The key is to be prompt and to be honest. And if you don't know the answer, find somebody that does and get those folks to talk to them. And that's kind of the motto I live by when it comes to working with the media. We also see ourselves as our own news service. We put out, I looked, I went and counted, from June 2015 to June 2016, 100, a little over 100 stories on our website. You know, not only do we put them on our website, but we put them out on social media and all those other places. And we have the tools to do it. The two of us that work in the office there, not necessarily Courtney, but, you know, we communicate with each other and divvy up assignments and get stuff done and go tell the good stories. 65 kids honored here this evening. It's pretty amazing. And that's what makes coming to work for us fun every day, to get to tell those types of stories. We produce all the content, obviously, for our social media sites as well. Here's a few statistics. We've got about 50, a little over 5,700 Facebook likes, about a little over 3,500 Twitter followers. Interesting, the demographics on Facebook, about 50% of our Facebook likes are folks ages 35 to 54. And Twitter, 53% are ages 18 to 34. So there's the shift right there. And we see that in the responses that we get. So it's good to be on both of those platforms. Just interesting, one of the recent posts we did on Chrissy's Closet had a reach of over 51,000 people. It was shared 323 times and was liked more than 1,200 times. So everybody loves them some Chrissy Hester, I guess. Take a lot of photos and videos to use with those stories. Since Atticton's been here, he's produced more than 50 videos already in a year, which you think of a video, production time, just production time, is usually anywhere between an hour, hour and a half per one minute of video. That doesn't even count the shooting and all that kind of stuff. So he works really hard and he does a really good job. We do graphic design a lot with our HR department and recruiting of teachers and those sorts of things. These are some things that we've done with them. Other departments often ask us to freshen up their documents to make them look nice, and we're more than happy to do it. School Messenger is probably our most important communication tool. We have the ability to call, email, and text every parent in the district in a matter of minutes. One of the things we utilize this for is emergency communications. It's our best tool for that, actually, just for that we can email and text and call in a matter of minutes. Well, what we really try to do is when something's happening at a campus, is I will go over to that campus and kind of take control of the communication aspect of it for the administration at that campus because their first priority, and as it should be, is the safety and well-being of the students and staff on that campus. While it will be nice to think that that's in the back of their mind, communicating with parents and the community in a time of crisis, it's not, and I don't think that it necessarily should be. And so that's kind of what the service we offer for them is. We put out a newsletter every six weeks. The Hall Monitor, it's video-based and it focuses on the talents of our students and staff, and that's a fun project to put together every six weeks. We also manage the background checks for the Volunteer in Public Schools program. Last year, we had 4,300-plus volunteers. Right now, we're at about almost 2,600, and that continues to grow throughout the year. It'll be well over 4,000 before it's all over with. Just a side note, the campuses manage their own volunteer opportunities. We just manage the backend, the background checks. And there is actually online administrative guideline that if someone does have a criminal history, you know, it's like a checkoff thing, whether they can or can't volunteer depending on the items that are on their background. So... Distribution of non-school materials. This is a screen capture of our E folder, which is really saved. We've gone to for non-school distribution of materials instead of sending everything home and take-home folders. We have had a lot of people go to posters and yard signs, however, which is fine, but the E folder has saved a lot of staff time and a lot, a lot of paper as well. Then we manage open records requests, and the vast majority of those are very simple. Every now and then, we'll get one that takes a considerable, that takes a considerable amount of time. And, but for the most part, they're just asking for directory-type information, those types of things. And then just finally, I want to wrap up with kind of some of the things that are challenges for us. There's a lot of noise out there nowadays. There's so much stimulus. That guy on the left there, it's like my seven-year-old. He's got all this stuff going on in his head and he can't focus on one thing, and I get it because there's so much out there to look at. We've all got computers in our pocket. There's lots of competition for screen time. And so you've got to fight really hard as a communications person to get your share of that screen time. One of the other challenges is just the news cycle. You know, used to, you read the newspaper in the morning and watch the evening news, and that's when you got your news. Well, nowadays, you get your news 24 hours a day, seven days a week, whenever you're awake. And so news breaks all the time, and it breaks from all different types of sources as well. And so that's difficult to monitor. And just the difficulty of monitoring all the different sources of information out there is somewhat overwhelming at times as well. So with all that being said, I will be happy to answer any questions or indulge comments.
Thank you for that overview. Any comments or questions?
I would just say, you know, it's constantly, the number of people who come up, I think to us as board members, certainly me, and my guess is that we would all concur, is that the communication out of this district is fantastic, especially in cases of when things go wrong or emergencies and, you know, you talk about the, you know, what your son goes through, and the fact is, is you guys have to communicate in about 50 different ways in order to hit the audience that you have to hit in order to make that happen. So I commend you guys for being on top of things from a technology standpoint and being willing to not, I mean, it would be very easy to say, "All right, well, we're just going to send out emails and that's going to be the end of it." And you guys go above and beyond, I think, to communicate sometimes. And I wish that there were people who read more of the fantastic things that are going on in this district. And you guys do a fantastic job of publicizing those things, so.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I would agree with that. And in particular, I found myself wondering if some of the information on the number of followers and likes, I'd turn, is that good? I don't even know.
He asked me, and I'm not the right person to ask.
Right. I'm assuming it is, but...
It's fair. I mean, you know, you look at districts like bigger districts and, you know, they have 15,000 to 20,000, but they've also got 80,000 students, so, yeah.
Well, I mean, my general take is it's good because the information's getting out. And the one thing I really wanted to comment on is kind of the crisis management. That has been very, very helpful because even though we are very, we're notified in a very timely way on certain things, a lot of times, I get a call from somebody who's gotten a communication you've sent out before we even get it. So that's fantastic. And that goes so far in alleviating parents' concerns. It's hard to overstate it. I mean, I'm a parent and I have a wife who's a mother of two kids in the district, and if something's happening at their school, they're tied into that social network, so they know it and they're instantly with these questions. And so thank you for doing that and keep it up. That's a fantastic model.
It's a bit of a fine line in making those determinations on when to send something out and when not. You know, you don't want to, you don't want to stir up the community when it doesn't need to be stirred up, when you know everyone's safe. But at the same time, you don't want rumors to take over and cause issues as well. So there's not necessarily a set, we do this, 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 and this. Each situation is kind of on its own, and each situation we evaluate. And sometimes it takes us a little longer to get the information out than we want, but we want to make sure we get the right information out the first time and not have to go back and double back on something and, "Oh, man, we should have, we should have told people not to come pick their kids up at school because it's going to cause bad traffic." We should have said that. We want to make sure we get it right the first time.
Yeah.
Well, one of the things I think that we've really benefited from having someone in your position is that it's more consistent, the kind of information we're getting, because you are evaluating, and it helps take that distraction in some ways away from some of the campus administrators because you are looking at it from the holistic view on, okay, when this happens in our district, this is how we handle it so that they can deal with the children. And so we do thank you for that. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item J1, Receive Annual, oh, I'm so excited. Receive the Annual Investment Report for the fiscal year ending August 31st, 2016. And I'm sorry, Mr. Martindale, I just...
I'm excited, come on, bro.
Yeah. I can hardly wait to see the graph. I'm just...
If you played it well, that's been good. It's going to be a good accident.
It's all about the Y-axis.
Communicate, communicate, communicate.
I'm waiting for Dr. Ely to introduce me with a word like Spartan.
I am overwhelmed that in our low interest rate environment, we have to talk about our investment returns five times. So this would be our annual investment report, so I look forward to your parsimonious report.
Am I what, report? Never mind.
Look it up.
Yes, as required by policy CDA that governs our investment strategies, as well as the Public Funds Investment Act, we are required to provide quarterly reports in addition to our annual investment reports. And one we're sharing this evening accounts for September 1, 2015, ending August 31st of 2016. And again, as I just mentioned, our investment policy, Local and Legal, that manages our actions with investments, is CDA. Again, the driving pieces within that policy are that we ensure the safety of our principal while maximizing our returns. We maintain the appropriate degree of liquidity to meet our cash flow needs, as well as the appropriate diversification, which reduces our loss, our potential loss on investments. And of course, Public Funds Investment Act also includes the maintaining of the appropriate investment officer training hours. And I look forward to the day that I can create a graph reporting interest rates that goes beyond 1%, Dr. Wilson. The, and if you reference the annual investment report attached to the agenda, page six includes this particular graph. It has four different items on it. The 90-day T-bill, which is considered the baseline or industry standard, the tax pool, and Loan Star, which allows us to maintain some degree of diversity. They have floated for a majority of the year, just a little above the 0.3%. Of course, where a majority of our interest is earned is with the bank, with BB&amp;T. The arrangement we have with them is that they pay us 0.35% or 35 basis points above the target Fed rate. And you can see the shift in the Fed rate beginning of the year. This is why you see the jump as far as what BB&amp;T has been providing us and paying us at 0.85% since January. On page nine, Investments by Type. Of course, a majority, on average, majority of our money we keep in the bank, obviously, because that's where we draw the highest interest. We do, again, keep a certain percentage of funds in our Loan Star and Tax Pool, just to have some degree, albeit rather small, of diversification. And all these accounts allow us a significant amount of being fluid to meet cash flow needs. Page 10, Within Your Annual Investment Report allows you a comparison from our interest earnings from 1415 to 1516. And as Mr. Harris said early from Taspe, you go through the good times and the bad times, and they wash out. And in the end, hopefully, we're headed the right direction. While they're not great, definitely on the uptick from the previous year. As you can see, from our general fund, almost an additional $200,000 in interest earnings. And also in our construction funds, an additional $130,000, from $540,000 to $900,000, almost $18,000 in interest for the 1516 school year. That was a 70% increase over the previous year. And again, the two factors that drove this value up is, of course, higher interest rates. And also, if you recall, the voters approved the bond in November of 2015. We sold the first half of those bonds in February 2016, so we did have that cash in the bank. So higher interest rate, as well as additional funds in the bank accounted for the increased interest earnings for this past year. Pages 13 through 26, just our CDA policy, Local and Legal. And I kind of mentioned those previously in the first slide. The driving principles behind our investment strategy, and also you'll see in our next agenda item here shortly, that there are no, will be no recommended changes to our current CDA, Local or Legal, policy that guides our investments. I would love to take any questions or comments. Again, a reminder, this is a report-only item for the board. I do want to thank Ms. Schaefer and Ms. Parks for their efforts in preparing our annual investment report.
Thank you. And we do appreciate your effort, even though we have to maintain some sense of humor, which has nothing to do with, obviously, your work. Any questions or comments? Thank you. We'll move on to item J2, Consider Adoption of the Resolution Stating that the Board of Trustees has reviewed the district's investment policies and procedures. Dr. Ely?
Thank you, Dr. Yoken. Those policies and procedures are listed under Board Policy CDA that Mr. Martindale went over. It's in the bulk of the report that was just presented, but with more information, including the resolution that requires adoption, denies, Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Dr. Ely. The Public Funds Investment Act from the Texas Government Code does require that annually we review our investment policies. The Act also requires that the governing body to adopt a written instrument, this is why we have a resolution attached to this particular item stating that we review that investment policy, which is CDA. The written instrument so adopted must record any changes made to the investment policy or strategies. Currently, we have no recommendations for any changes to our current CDA policy governing investments. So it is administration's recommendation that the board consider approval of the resolution as presented.
Thank you. Any comments? Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
I move we approve the resolution related to the review of the investment policy and investment strategies as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the motion as presented, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Mr. Martindale. We'll move on to item K1, consider approval of the guaranteed maximum price, GPM, the total project budget, authorization for the superintendent or his designee to execute necessary documents associated therewith, and the authorization to proceed with the work associated with middle school number three. Dr. Ely?
Thank you, Dr. Yoken. Members of the board, at our 5 o'clock board workshop this afternoon, Mr. Hall took us through an update on our 2013 bond projects and our 2015 bond projects. And one of the 2015 projects is what we have for your consideration this evening. This is our third middle school, and it's adoption of the guaranteed maximum price. Mr. Hall, the good folks, general contractors at Pepper Lawson Construction, and VOK Architects have gone through the process to determine this guaranteed maximum price. That will be before you this evening. With more information on that, is John Hall, Executive Director for Facilities. Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Dr. Ely, Dr. Yoken, members of the board. It's my pleasure to be bringing forth for your consideration the middle school number three project, GMP, and overall budget. So for a little background on it, back in November of 2015, the College Station ISD voters passed a bond issue for $135.9 million, and the largest project identified on that bond package was this middle school project. This agenda item represents the work related to preparing the guaranteed maximum price and the total project budget for this new facility. The GMP for this project was based on the request for competitive seal proposals that we, that we always use, and this was advertised to the public as required by statute. The construction manager at risk, Pepper Lawson Construction, coordinated the competitive seal process, competitive seal proposal process for us, and Theo Rouse and I were, were in attendance when the proposals were received and tabulated on September 29, 2016. It's probably worth noting at this time that on bid day, it was slightly over budget. It was about 1.9 million over, but on a large-scope project like this, that's not, that's not, I'll say grossly out of whack. So it took us a little work, a couple of, a couple of weeks to, to fine-tune, tighten down the screws on the budget and see where we had a little scope overlap and, and things like that, and we were able to land it within budget. So in consultation with CSISD and VOK Architects, Pepper Lawson Construction, they have reviewed the final scope of work, reputation of subcontractors, quality of materials specified, and other relevant factors in arriving at their GMP for the project. Pepper Lawson Construction proposes a GMP for this project in the amount of $43,488,226. On the second page of the memo there, if you, if you care to go through it there, we also have a summary of the proposed total project budget broken out. We started off with a total planning allocation of $51,370,000. After you add in the GMP of $43,488,226, we pick up the additional soft costs that are typical to a project, which include furniture fixtures and equipment, technology, architects and engineers, and professional fees, construction materials testing, test and air balance. All of those are fairly standard. I would like to note on the city infrastructure costs, we typically carry about $300,000. After the last negotiation with the city with the inner, our inter-local agreement with the intermediate school, we realized we needed to bump that up a little bit. So that number is now 500,000 for this project. We feel like that would be more accurate. And we did have to tighten up the project contingency down to 400,000, as, as Dr. Weston had pointed out a little bit earlier tonight. So all of that to say is that we were able to land it just, just right in budget with the $51,370,000, but we were not able to take it any lower than that. So we're really not going to be realizing any savings, at least on the front end of this project. So. So with that said, it is recommended that the Board of Trustees of College Station Independent School District approve the guaranteed maximum price of $43,488,226 from Pepper Lawson Construction, and the total project budget in the amount of $51,370,000 for the middle school number three project. It is further recommended that the superintendent or his designee be authorized to sign any necessary documents to implement the guaranteed maximum price, and that the Board of Trustees authorizes the commencement of the work associated with this project. And with that, I'd love to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
I have a couple. First, I want to ask, is the architecture and the proposed finish-out for this project consistent with the middle schools that we currently have?
Consistent with the middle schools that we have. I would say, I would say it's more consistent with College Station Middle School, A&amp;M Consolidated Middle School. It, it wouldn't be quite as consistent with that one. The final finish-out, I would say it is. You know, we're not going with any really high-dollar fancy interior finishes or anything. So the carpet and the finishes and the flooring and, and the painted surfaces, that'll all be comparable, too. But I would say, I would say it's more consistent probably in the fit and finish with, certainly with the intermediate school that we just, we just started projects, you know, a few months back, but also with the latest elementary schools. So I'd say it's probably a little, a little nicer, generally speaking, than AMCMS, and probably a little more consistent with CSMs at this point. I would like to add one note, if I could. We do have money figured for AMCMS to, to update that as well, to put some flexible spaces and include it in the 2015 bond to, to do a little catch-up on that account as well.
Any other questions?
I make the motion that we approve as eloquently stated.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second that.
Eloquently.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. With that, we will adjourn.